Good afternoon. The February 28, 2019 work session will now come to order. Members of the Board, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The first order of business is to go into closed session.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but we needed a motion in order to approve that.
I didn't do that. I just blew right through that. Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anyone willing to move that we approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there anyone willing to second that motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The next issue we have is to go into closed session for discussion of matters covering on items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the following: the assignment appointment, performance disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, deliberation regarding the hearing officer's recommendation pertaining to the School Board Employee Grievance Case Number 18-19-E-4 in the admission and discipline of specific students. Is there a motion that we go into closed session for that, those purposes?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll now move to closed session for that purpose. Thank you. Thank you very much for your patience as we work through some items. Members of the Board, give me one second, I'm sorry. I need another, more of your patience. Members of the Board, is there a motion? We certify that we went into closed session and only discussed those matters which were disclosed in the motion for closed session.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. Ma'am Superintendent?
Got my hammer.
Oh, I beg your pardon. One of the items that we considered in closed session involved a employee grievance. And members of the Board, we've considered the material appropriately in closed session. Is there a motion regarding the grievance in the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the hearing officer's recommendation in employee grievance case number 18-19-E-4 and approve the superintendent's recommendation for dismissal.
Thank you. It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. For the first item, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 17-18-S-12 for violation of the Student Code of Conduct. And as always, names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Before I call for a motion, just to point out to those who may be listening, that each one of the student cases that we'll be hearing, not only has their name been protected, but the case itself has been thoroughly reviewed and investigated and shared with the Board, both in writing, and then there's been an opportunity to discuss it in closed session. With that being said, members of the Board, is there a motion regarding adoption of the superintendent's recommendation in student case number 17-18-S-12?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor of adopting the superintendent's recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Next item is the recommendation that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-14 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-14. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor of adopting superintendent's recommendation regarding for the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-14 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries.
And finally, for recommendations of expulsion, is the recommendation that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-16 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for expulsion in case, student case number 18-19-S-16?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve participation in the grad center for student case number 17-18-S-12.
Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding grad attendance for student case number 17-18-S-12. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The recommendation is adopted.
The superintendent also recommends that the school board approve participation in the grad center for student case number 18-19-S-16.
Thank you. Members of the Board, is there a motion regarding adopting superintendent's recommendation for student case number 18-19-S-16 for approval of attendance at the grad program?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. And next, I'm going to move ahead of item 5.03 on the agenda, which is related to the annual financial plan. We'll move past that and come to it later so that we can move forward with items 6.01 and 6.02, which fall under instructional support as both our special education subcommittee reports, and we have a number of guests joining us for those this evening. So Dr. Hamlet has come forward and she'll provide an introduction for both items related to the subcommittees for special education.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Cashwell, this afternoon, you're going to hear two updates from two of our five subcommittees. I know you've already heard one, but as, just a reminder, each of our subcommittees are co-led by a Henrico County Public Schools employee and a community member and/or parent. So this afternoon, you're going to hear from Dr. Katie Smith, who's our Assistant Director for Exceptional Education, along with Melissa Dart, who is a representative of our Special Education Advisory Committee. And then immediately following their report, you will hear from Dr. Noel, our Director of Student Support and Disciplinary Review, and Ms. Tara Adams, who's a community member as well. Once you hear from all five subcommittees, which we should wrap up in March, then we will come back to the Board with a more comprehensive update and report on what we've done after bringing the committees back together to look at trends and look at big picture recommendations. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith and Ms. Dart.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the work that has been completed so far by the Placement and Identification Subcommittee.
The Placement Subcommittee consists of a diverse population of Henrico County staff members and community members. Representatives from the Exceptional Education Department were joined by related service providers, school psychologists, school-based administrators, division leaders, instructional directors, and parents. We would like to thank our committee members who are in attendance today. The Placement and Identification Subcommittee employed a variety of methods for gaining input from our members. The initial face-to-face meeting in October engaged representatives from all five subcommittees. Moving forward, our Subcommittee used a combination of face-to-face and online meetings to gather input and gain consensus on the short and long-term action items that we are presenting to you today. Although you may not see it explicitly listed on each slide that follows, our Subcommittee kept the four cornerstones at the forefront of our considerations as we met and discussed our priorities and recommendations. I'm excited to share a department's new mission statement, which directly addresses each one of the four cornerstones. That's the slide you see now. The Committee has come forward with six short-term and long-term actions. In the following slides, we will talk through each of the priorities and propose action steps the Committee would like for Henrico County Public Schools to consider as we work together to support students with disabilities in the areas of placement and identification. Our first four recommendations are short-term actions. As the program evaluation outlined, Henrico has the highest rate of inclusion of students with disabilities compared to divisions of similar size. Our first committee recommendation is the creation of an Inclusion Task Force. This work group would be comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders, including parents, teachers, administrators, and community organizations. The group would create a mission statement for inclusion that would be used by the division to expand our inclusive practices. In addition, the work group would identify model inclusive classrooms, as well as a rubric to support teachers and administrators, and identifying evidence of inclusive practices during classroom observations. Our second recommendation focuses on increasing our professional development for eligibility teams. Currently, Henrico is over-identifying African-American students in the disability categories of emotional disabilities, intellectual disabilities, and other health impairment. Working alongside our school psychologists and social workers, the Exceptional Education Department will develop a specific training for school-based teams focused on the disability criteria worksheets previously mentioned. The goal is to implement the training during the summer and fall of 2019. Members of our Exceptional Education Department and school psychologists attended one eligibility training by the Virginia Department of Education in January, and we are slated to attend a second training specific to our practices in March.
Our third recommendation focuses on the need to expand our integrated services programs at the elementary level. Most of our current elementary integrated services programs are at or approaching capacity, so we need to continue to allocate space and staffing to meet the increasing demand. Currently, three new teaching positions are allocated in the 19 to 2020 budget, and we will be working with the Space Utilization Committee to determine availability of space, taking into consideration feeder patterns. Our fourth recommendation is to expand regional autism classroom programming at the high school level. VDOE no longer supports the regional school programming model and is now supporting regional classroom models. Currently, we have two students who attend the regional autism classroom at Brooklyn Middle School and will be transitioning to high school for the 19-20 academic year, with two additional students following in 20 to 21. There are also additional students who could be identified for the high school regional classroom for next year. The Exceptional Education Department plans to work with the Space Utilization Committee to identify potential school locations to meet the needs of our students who access regional classroom programming. In looking at our long-range action items, the Placement Committee has begun to identify areas of interest which overlap with the other four committees. These opportunities bring commonalities into the work of the other subcommittees. A long-range goal would be to explore alternative programming, such as the needs, the idea of need-based specialty centers for students with disabilities. The Committee liked the term specialty center, as it has a positive view in our community, already aligned with meeting the diverse interests and needs of our students. The specialty centers would create centralized resources for students with more significant needs. The team feels strongly about the specific skill-based professional development the teachers would be provided and need in order to work with our students who have more significant challenges. Specialty centers in the areas of emotional disabilities, autism, and reading have been part of the team's consideration. In order to maintain our high rates of inclusion, the team has discussed half-day academic participation, as well as a full-day model, to meet the various needs of our students. Some other school districts in Virginia have adopted various accessibility models to meet the diverse needs of students. Our sixth recommendation would be to expand our ED programming for students. This upcoming school year, we will be implementing K-6 social-emotional curriculum, and the Committee's long-term goal would be to expand student access at the secondary, to the secondary level. In addition, expanding access to necessary behavior supports, K-12, is a priority of our Committee. While another Committee is looking specifically at programming at the Academy of Virginia Randolph, all members of the Committee and the Placement and Identification Committee express the need to expand the access of similar programming to that at AVR across the division. In addition, the Committee recommends the Division examine the growing need for increasing bliss supports, particularly at the high school level. Next steps. Next steps for the Placement and Identification Committee include continuing to collect and review feedback related to our six recommendations. In addition, Committee members will plan to visit some of the neighboring school divisions to learn more about the various program models that are being implemented to meet the needs of students. In addition, the Committee will share all information and collaborate with stakeholders as we begin to work toward our short- and long-term action items. We look forward to providing future updates to our school board members and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions now? I'm sure. Can we ask questions now before the other part? Or is it?
Yeah. So you're breaking up for questions now?
I'm not sure.
Absolutely, we can. Or if you want to hear the other presentation, we can address them together.
Yeah. You want to wait, or you want to go now?
No, I prefer to go, not get the two mixed together.
Okay, let's go. Do you have a question?
I do. That's why I asked that question.
All right.
If we could back up to the slide with number three and four on it. There we go.
Yes.
So if you could explain more to me about your integrated services programs, exactly what those are, like which ones? And when you talk about expanding them, give me examples of what do you think we need to expand? How many students that would serve?
So, we don't necessarily know how many students at this point, because it's students who are identified with some of our most significant needs. So we're talking about our functional integrated services, AIS and SIS classrooms. So our students, where some of those students are on the VAP track, or some students who are actually accessing SOL curriculum, but require some social supports or academic supports in the integrated services classroom. So those would be students who, we have the need, and we're seeing growing in larger numbers in those programs at the elementary level, and we try to just forecast and be forward-thinking in terms of our planning, identifying where we're seeing increasing trends in the needs of students.
So you're thinking that what you need is more personnel, so that your numbers, your PTR is lower?
Yes.
And so that's, so are you thinking we need more location, more classrooms?
We're going to need more classrooms, yes.
Okay. As well as teachers just?
Because there's not programs now in every elementary school. So what happens is based on where students are live, they may have to go to another zoned program outside of their traditional school, and so that's?
So closer access?
Yes.
Okay. Any idea, I mean, in your professional opinion? Tell me what you think that does to meet the student need, that we're not meeting now?
I don't think it's, this recommendation isn't because we're not meeting student needs. We're just seeing a growing number of students who need to access this level of programming. And so trying to take the number of classrooms we have now in order to meet the needs that we have for identified students. It's not an expansion of a program because we currently don't have the identified needs. It's more or less a space in trying to predict future programming needs we're going to have for students who are eligible for these services.
Okay. And when you talk about, on the next slide, expanding the ED program?
Yes.
Just give me what you think that might look like.
Well, I think our Committee honestly hasn't gotten that far into what that programming's going to look like. I think right now, we're just kind of kept it at a high level, because I know there's another Committee that's looking specifically at AVR, but really looking at the programming related to the Academy of Virginia Randolph. But I think all Committee members were vocal, and we know that we need some additional supports for our school teams around the area of students who have emotional disabilities. So I think we're open to what that model could look like, and part of our next steps would be to look at what some of our neighboring school divisions are doing to meet that need.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That does it for me.
Thank you. Great questions. Mr. Pike?
Yes, I have a, sorry. Question about the number two, the professional development for eligibility teams. I often find that with staff development and professional development, that we present something, and then there might be something new that comes four, five months, six months later. So how do we ensure that what you're proposing here will stay with teachers, that they'll be able to work with it, see its usefulness, be able to ask questions, be able to maintain it and sustain it over a period of time?
So I think one of the keys of the professional development that we'll have is we have to identify what the outcomes of that professional development are going to be ahead of time, and what are going to be the targets that we use and the data that we collect in terms of measure success. Now, this is a little bit different from your standard professional development, because it is around specifically the identification practices for students with disabilities. So those various criteria worksheets, unless they change at the state level, are not really going to change for Henrico County school-based teams. So it's really about trying to take the information that our school-based teams may struggle with or may not understand, and really trying to incorporate specific supports to help them understand the different criteria that a student has to meet in order to be found eligible of a student with an emotional, intellectual, or another health impairment disability.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a couple of comments. Of the last series, the last answer you provided, I think is very important, that you not only do what you said you're going to do, and that is establish what the outcomes, and how you're going to measure the success on the front end versus at the end, let's, now let's look back and see what we did, and what, did it work or not? Obviously, you can adjust those as you go, but I think that any successful program, you've got to have on the front end, what is it, what's the outcome we're aiming for, and how do we measure whether we've accomplished it? So it was a perfect answer to a really good question. Of course, execution has to be not perfect, but at least good.
Yes.
So, and then beyond that, I just, on behalf of the whole Board and the whole school system, we thank you as a group, but also thank the volunteers on the Committee for the hard work that you do.
Absolutely.
The thorough work that is done on the Committee, because it's not, no one's just going through the motions. All of this work is in-depth, it's broad, and it's deep, and it's very meaningful, and it's useful, and it guides us in what we do. So to Mrs. Dart and those who serve with you, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please pass along our thanks to the entire team.
I will. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, thank you for this opportunity to share with you the work that's been completed by the Discipline Subcommittee. This program evaluation is the direct motivation for the existence of this task force. The current national debate on the subject, discipline disparities in schools loom large over the entire profession. This debate boils down between a conflict between two opposing camps, those who believe we should maintain law and order by using suspensions and expulsions, and between those who believe suspensions and expulsions cause various negative outcomes, or as Dr. Pedro Noguera says, "Poor academic performance, student disengagement, and the school-of-prison pipeline." The goal of the school-based discipline is to curb unacceptable behavior and maintain an environment that is conducive to learning. Now here's a bit of a spoiler alert. So much of what you're about to hear will sound familiar, because thanks to you, HEPS is leading Virginia in supportive and proactive measures to make exclusionary practices a last resort.
The Sped Work Group Committee first met Monday, October 29, 2018, at the New Bridge Learning Center. Under the guidance of Dr. Hamlet, the larger group was separated into five work group subcommittees: Staffing, Placing and Identification, Virginia Randolph Program Improvement, Family and Committee Engagement, and Discipline. We took the 11 recommendations from the Equity Parent Engagement and Special Education Program Evaluation, prioritized them, merged the similar ones, and ended up with eight achievable discipline priorities.
Now that you know the what, here is the who. At the center of the Committee's focus is equitable student discipline. The Committee is composed of parents, community members, instruction support directors, instructional directors, principals, dean of students, e-reset and reset coordinators, teachers, and administrators. Please allow me to take a moment to publicly recognize and thank this Committee for the work in making our students' life ready. With those Committee members who are here, please stand and be recognized.
Thank you.
Now that you met the team, now the most urgent and pressing question, the why. Why is this work so important? Because students who are suspended just once are three times more likely to have contact with the juvenile justice system, five times more likely to drop out of school, six times more likely to repeat a grade. Why is this work so important? Because in 2015, nationally, 1.2 million African-American students received a single out-of-school suspension. And again, frequent suspensions lead to poor academic performance, student disengagement, and possibly the school-of-prison pipeline. Why is this work so important? Because African-American students are suspended more than three times the rate of Caucasian students. And this is seemingly because we have two kinds of discipline in our schools. We have criminalized discipline that uses solution-based measure, use punitive-based measures like suspensions, expulsions, or referral to law enforcement, and we have medicalized discipline, which use solution-based measures, such as medical attention and/or support interventions. In the first bullet, you saw that in 1516, 1.2 million African-American students faced at least one out-of-school suspension. This map shows that of that 1.2 million, 55% came from 13 southern states, including our very own Commonwealth of Virginia. As you see here, African-American students make up less than a quarter of the student population, yet over half of all out-of-school suspensions.
While doing this work, the Subcommittee members looked through the lens of our four cornerstones: relationships, equity and opportunity, academic growth, and safety and wellness, as we made decisions about the program's evaluations recommendations. Again, we took the 11 recommendations from the program evaluation, merged the ones that were similar, and ended up with the eight discipline priorities. We'll talk about each of these priorities and the proposed action steps the Committee would like for the Board to consider as we work together to make our students' life ready. The unanimous first choice was one, mandatory all-staff training. This recommendation referenced specifically sped staff be trained in behavior management techniques. We would like to see all staff trained in these techniques, regardless of their student population. We also would like it to be mandatory that all Henrico County Public Schools staff be trained and provided supportive coaching in the areas of implicit bias, trauma-informed care, and restorative practices, equity, culture, and the needs of children with disabilities, and cultural competency continuum.
Our number-two priority is to collect, analyze, and expand discipline data. Each Henrico County Public School should set target goals on how to reduce suspensions and/or expulsions for identified subgroups. We should focus less on the overall discipline goals, but rather focus on specific goals regarding African-American students, and especially African-American students with disabilities. When we do this, we target the exact population of students who are currently receiving inequitable treatment in America's schools. Similarly, we should focus directly on specific discipline rates, rather than indirectly on the reduction of an overall discipline rates. For example, in 1516, here in Henrico, we had 94% of our students with zero out-of-school suspensions. We had 4% of our students have one out-of-school suspensions, and 2% with two or more out-of-school suspensions. And those numbers are strong. I will put them up against any school division in the nation. As a matter of fact, because of those numbers, in 2017, as you remember, we won the 2017 Magna Award for school divisions doing innovative things to reduce exclusionary practices. But before I break my arm trying to pat myself on the back for having something to do with this, of that 2% with two or more out-of-school suspensions, 81% were African-American students, 13.7 Caucasian, 5.3 other. So yes, we are reducing our overall suspension rates, but the disparity remains, and that, again, is why this work is so important. Not only should we set specific goals to reduce exclusionary discipline for identified groups, we should also develop a monitoring and accountability process at the school and division levels.
In the same vein, our priority number three is to create a plan that focuses on race and culture. We want to align behavioral support services within a tiered system of support model, incorporating positive behavior intervention support, but more importantly, culturally relevant PBIS. These approaches are effective within racially and culturally diverse schools and communities. Culturally relevant PBIS focuses on genuine collaboration within families and students, particularly those with culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds. This focus should be done to effectively examine school culture, disciplinary practices, and processes. Adopting this type of participatory model can also help improve relationships between division leaders, families, and students. Another important point, we should explore partnerships- Another important point, we should explore partnerships with external organizations. In just a moment, we'll talk more about the importance of partnerships in priority number five.
Our priority number four is to expand school quality indicators. This should be done in order to track and analyze the number of instructional days lost to suspensions and expulsions for African-American students and for African-American students with disabilities. According to the report by the Civil Rights Project and the Charles Hamilton Houston Institute for Race and Justice, African-American students with disabilities nationwide lost substantially more instruction time due to discipline than their white counterparts. Research found that African-American students overall are suspended at higher rates of all subgroups. The report found that nationwide, for every 100 students with special needs in 2015, 2016, white students lost 43 days of suspension, while black students lost 121 days. And again, this is why this work is so important.
Now, a moment ago, you heard about partnerships, and our priority number five is that HCPS needs to connect with outside agencies. We should adopt a proactive approach to linking students with physical health, mental health, and social-emotional needs, especially those that cannot be fully met by Henrico County Public School staff. The goal is to create and/or implement an effective tiered systems approach to connect outside services to students identified as needing services beyond the capacity of the schools. Linking our families with outside agencies will also help ensure that every student has effective case management as needed. This will require effective collaboration between teachers, behavioral staff, counselors, social workers, et cetera, with Henrico County Public Schools. These partnerships will help ensure that the school division and outside agencies work collaboratively when addressing the needs of our students and families. For instance, if a student is identified as needing mental health services, ideally, a school caseworker would contact Henrico Mental Health or other provider identified by the family, help schedule an appointment, with the family's permission, of course, share information on the reason for the referral, and serve as a contact for any necessary follow-up at the school. This program evaluation suggests that this kind of transitional handoff as part of case man, as part of a case management system appears to be lacking. Per the report, some students already may have case managers at other agencies, and schools need not duplicate this. If building-level administrators had direct contact with outside agencies such as Henrico Mental Health, we could far more readily connect them with, with the students and families in need of their services.
Sticking with the collaboration theme, our priority number six is to join forces. Now, the program evaluation specified that exceptional ed, equity and diversity, and the Student Support and Disciplinary Review Committee should join forces. Our committee thought it was a good idea to add family and community engagement to the team. Congratulations, Bill, you're part of the team. All right. When we increased the collaboration for these four instruction support departments, we were able to better address the significant number of African-American students and African-American students with disabilities who are suspended for subjective codes. With this increased collaboration, we moved from working in silos approach to a true one Henrico approach in order to improve our efforts to support students and families.
Through differentiated and engaging instruction, we're able to reach a child's mind. Through priority number seven, specialized behavior programs, we're able to reach a child's heart. It is vitally important that we continue and expand specialized behavior programs such as SAS, Henrico Heroes, Dean of Students, Bliss, et cetera, but consider adopting a more systematic approach to training protocols, success metrics, coordination with faculty, and other support personnel. This will ensure that we are all reading from the same sheet of music. Bliss, for example, is a helpful tier-two or-three program for a narrow section of students with behavioral challenges. However, the nature of the program is extremely labor-intensive and highly vulnerable to Bliss coordinators require exceptionally strong case management skills and behavior intervention skills. To make this program as successful as possible, Bliss coordinators should perhaps be in an 11-month position and be offered considerable ongoing professional training. When the Bliss coordinator can intervene on an individual level to de-escalate their students and mediate conflicts, it's well worth the investment. However, when Bliss is overcrowded and the coordinator cannot keep up, it makes the program difficult to maintain. Furthermore, it is a must that we promote more relationship-based programs. The intensive relationship-based approach of these programs is well-supported in literature, but the programs may have a more effective and wider reach if they coordinate more effectively with each other and with other school personnel. To avoid duplication, identify one program as the lead for each student who needs additional behavior support, and as appropriate, we should integrate these programs into the IEP planning process.
Our eighth priority refers to our Code of Student Conduct. This is last because we do this every year. However, the program evaluation suggests that we consider further amending the Code of Student Conduct to promote alternative discipline approaches for minor infractions in lieu of exclusionary discipline. It is also, it is suggested that we consider further revising the code so that students are not removed for committing minor or subjective offenses or decodes. It also suggested that we expand the current limitation on exclusionary discipline for minor offenses in our elementary schools and extend it to our secondary schools. For example, making decode infractions a category-one offense rather than a category-one or-two offense may help reduce suspensions and provide clear guidance to schools by mitigating discrepancies in how students are disciplined. By doing this, we can provide more alternative options for consequences in the spirit of restorative justice. And per Mr. Noguera's Hermitage Associate Principal, who's here with us tonight, a word of caution here, the Code of Student Conduct gives secondary school administrators the latitude to dial consequences down as they see fit. Adopting the program evaluation's recommendation that secondary schools be constrained by the elementary school limitations on student consequences would erase the distinction between our behavioral expectations for teenage students as opposed, as opposed to those we reserve for younger students. On a bit of a side note, for the past two and a half years, I had the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Virginia Student Support and Conduct Committee. This committee was asked by the VDOE to revise the old State Code of Conduct, and I can happily report that the model guidance for positive and preventative Code of Student Conduct policy, an alternative to suspensions, I know that's a mouthful, was approved by the Code of Student Conduct recently. The model guidance closely, and dare I say, resembles Henrico's Code of Student Conduct.
Much of what you just heard sounds familiar, because Henrico is leading the way when it comes to supportive and proactive measures. You also heard that a number of our points deal with partnerships, and we know we cannot fully support our students if we, sorry, if we work in silos. The discipline committee, as well as the four subcommittees, understand that in order to become one Henrico and to accomplish our goal of student success, it will take an effort from all of these stakeholders in Henrico County Public Schools.
As for next steps, the committee welcomes feedback and will continue to collaborate with, with different HCPS departments supporting our division, with the other four subcommittees, and with the board to maximize our efforts to truly make our students' life ready. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you. Members of the board, are there any questions or comments to share? Let's start here with Reverend Cooper, if that's okay, please.
I wanted to echo what the chairman said to the previous group in regards to your group and to all the work that was done. Question I raised is just like a point of clarity on, on bullet number two. So I'm appreciative of the aggressive goal-setting when it comes to the targeted goals as far as decreasing the specific percentages. So the question that I raise is what's going to be the barometer that we use to set that, those goals? I also heard you say you're going to set them, but also implement the ability to monitor, you know, what goals we're setting. And then if, if we hit them, if we miss them, what's the correct, what is the proactive corrective action that we're going to, we're going to use to make sure this, this is continuous and consistent?
Well, one of the things we would do, as, as I said, not just look at the overall suspension rates, but absolutely look at the, the population that's being negatively impacted by these suspensions. So we would look at the suspension rates for African-American students, African-American students with disabilities, and focus on what we can do to work on those. Now certainly, we want to keep our overall suspensions down totally, but certainly we need to look at, now, the, the numbers I showed about the 94 and the 4% and 1%, that's, that's the good stuff. We need to go deeper into the discipline. One of the committee members said we need to go inside the discipline, the data just a little bit more. And that's what this, what the impetus for this particular goal, set those target goals on how to reduce the, the population of students who are greatly impacted by these suspensions.
So right now, we have not yet kind of delve, delve into the data to determine.
We already, we have, as, as an office and as, as a division.
We're not ready to release them yet.
Yeah, not just.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
We all get back together again.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Pike. Oh, good, good, good.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I want to echo, thanks. This is really, really, really tough work, and probably some of the most important work that the school system needs to look at. And there's so many things involved, and like Reverend Cooper just talked about the data, you know, there's a lot of data that we all are asked to look at. But I think when it comes to students that are disruptive, is really getting in there and drilling down and finding out what are all the things that are impacting that child, impacting that student, and causing this to happen. I think the other piece is I applaud the idea of, of the training and the staff development, but I think we have to be careful in, in making sure that we really find staff development programs, professional development programs that really, really work.
I agree.
If, if we invest in programs that are not going to be practical, not going to be useful, and we're not going to get buy-in from the people in the trenches, then we're going to chunk a lot of money and, and lose. The other piece that was mentioned that I think is just absolutely critical is the family dynamic. We have got to build components into making that work and using that as a bridge early, early on.
That's why including family and communication was a great.
Absolutely. I think that's a terrific idea and, and a way to go with that. And, and the last thing, and, and I think maybe this gets overlooked, is, is how do, how do we know that our programs like Bliss, how do we know that they're working? Are we looking at the data there? I, I heard it referenced here, but are we really getting in there and looking at and finding, well, this is really a successful part of it, but here's a part that we really need to do some improvement on, and so that we know that we're being successful in, in terms of that, the follow-up with, with those students? So there's, there's a lot to think about there. And maybe one last piece is, I don't know that we ever look at how these students that are, are just really struggling with their discipline impact their peers. What's the impact on peers in terms of their capacity to learn and be successful in classroom when a youngster is just really struggling consistently with their discipline? So I, I thank you, and I thank your team and your committee for all you're doing, but I hate to tell you, I don't think you're done.
No.
I think this is going to be an ongoing thing. And one final favor I would have to ask, and I don't know if the rest of the board would want this, but I would love, love to have your script. You threw a lot of information at us, but I would love to have your script and be able to read through it and.
Absolutely.
And look at that a little more carefully. And thank you for all you're doing. And don't, don't stop.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Pike, if I might address part of your question related to the, the recommendation that came forth from this committee related to the expansion of programs like Bliss and your question as to whether or not the effectiveness has been studied. And one thing that was a recommendation and next step in Amy's passport document was that we look at a program evaluation for some of those specialized programs so we can capture where the high-yield results are and where there might be areas that need improving before we determine how we might scale anything up. And I think the, the committee members presenting did a great job pointing out some of the areas that probably need fine-tuning within Bliss, for example, but that's something we're going to study comprehensively before we make any decisions to scale anything of that nature up. And then, you know, furthermore, I know some of that deep data dive, as has been suggested, has certainly begun and will continue, but really drilling down to the profile of the students who are in, I know Dr. Hamlet has referred to the 2% who we see engaged in the suspensions and, and looking at what their needs are and so how we can meet them through specialized programming, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else, Mr. Pike? Mrs. Augman?
Okay, my turn. I wanted just to real quickly speak to what you talked to, talked about on the Code of Conduct. My only concern is when, when we give latitude, because I think that's what you said, we're going to give more opportunities for administrators to make their own decisions.
Right.
I'm all for that. But I don't also then want to hear, well, at this school, this happened, and this school, that happened, which gets us backwards where we were trying to avoid that.
And I think the, the code violation categories that we have in our Code of Student Conduct will eliminate that great.
That, and that, I think that's absolutely what we need. But I, I do, I mean, any parent, as, we're all probably parents, so most, most people are that are in this room, and one of the things I know with my own kids that I couldn't just talk to them and tell them, I didn't like what you did, and expect them to never do it again. So I would love to see us have, because oftentimes, you know, when we're dealing with kids who don't exactly have the best influence in their life, they're not seeing the right way. And so some mentoring going on if we can connect these kids who are, they're at that precipice, they're at that point where we're going to either catch them and bring them back in and, and help them be successful, or they're going to continue down the wrong path. I would love for us to bring in some mentoring opportunities as part of this discussion.
And, and, Miss Augman, we definitely have that with Henrico Heroes, and we have it with.
Right.
Our two coordinators of behavior support in my office, you know, Ms. Armstrong, Mr. Hargrove here, they're my two coordinators of behavior support. And students who come forward to the board and we feel they need additional services at one of our alternative sites, they work with them, so.
Well, and hopefully, we could start getting that to them sooner.
Yes.
Than before they get to this point. And, and that, I think, is so key. But I mean, I'm just being honest, I've had a couple of teachers over the last probably year or so say that so often in some of the, the programs where the kids just leave the classroom, they go to reset, they come back, they've been given a time just to kind of cool down and, and come back, but they have this feeling of, hey, I got away with it. So I, I know there, we need some attention to, there's a, there's a responsibility here to, to impress upon kids that this, this behavior is not acceptable, whatever it happens to be. And, and so I think there's a fine line. You don't want to suspend kids for every little thing, of course, that, that, we want to reduce that, and we want to make them understand, but I also think we can't give them the you got away with it.
Oh, absolutely.
Too. So there's a fine line, we're dancing here, and I just want to be sure that we're paying attention to, to that.
Right. And I, and I agree, and I think so much of what you said is, is related to Mr. Pike's point about, you know, these kids are acting out. Have we looked at the underlying reason?
Right.
I think that outward behavior are symptoms of, of trauma.
Right, yes, right.
In a number of the hearings that I have, it, it's the same thing, it sounds like a broken record.
Absolutely.
These students go through so much.
Well, and until these kids are shown a reason to want to change too, and I think that is part of that whole mentoring, let's give you another way to look at where you could go.
Absolutely.
And that, you know, maybe where you were headed was not the place you really want to go, and we would like for you to see there's another way to live life.
Other way.
And so, I don't know, I, I just think y'all are doing great work, and like Bill said, I mean, there's a lot of work to do, and I think it's ongoing. It has been, I mean, ever since I've been on the board, we've been talking about how to make the Code of Conduct a living, breathing, working thing that helps our kids. It's not always intended to be punitive, it's, it's intended to be guiding them.
Definitely.
In the right way that, because you're, you're absolutely right. Every kid in that class, whatever class, deserves a calm environment in which to learn.
Right.
And so, now, so I applaud what you're doing, and if there, I would, the only other question I have for you is, what do you need that you don't have to get your work done right now? I'm curious.
More bodies.
Okay. Just more help.
More coordinators of behavior support. Well, we, we are actively going after more mentors. We do that all the time, and Leslie Velas, my specialist, is doing a fabulous job of, of recruiting, but certainly if we had more coordinators of behavior support, just more people who could get in. And I know the work that Marcella and Jermaine, they do, is, is great, but they're, they're, they're spread thin.
Mm-hmm.
And we want to be effective. We don't want to just say.
Absolutely.
We're serving 100 students, but we're only effectively serving 30.
Right. Right.
Uh, I would like to-
I agree.
Say we're serving 50 at our best, versus saying we're serving 100.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Cox?
Well, one of the pleasures of going last is most everything I had written down to say has already been said, believe it or not, it's kind of funny. Uh, so what I, I'm going to, go ahead and say thank you, though, because this is a daunting task, and y'all have taken this on so admirably, and thank you so much, I know it's been a lot of hours, and we do appreciate this work, it's very meaningful and very purposeful. Um, I am very excited with actually number one, nobody's, uh, nobody's spoken number one yet, so that's, I was going to speak to this guy. Oh, you don't have to go back that far, there we go. The mandatory all-staff training, I mean, that is, is so vital, um, for all of our, our staff to understand our students, and I think that once we understand where the frustration or the anger is coming from, uh, why they're acting out, then, then we really can move forward with it.
Yeah.
And I love that, um, you brought up the trauma-informed care piece of it, and I think that that's a vital piece, and I hope that we can support you with that, um, because I know that would come with a price tag too, as well, and hopefully, we can support that to you. Um, now to go to the code of conduct issue, um, I forgot the number that one was, four?
It's eight, I think it's the last one.
Eight, okay, here we go. Eight, 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 got it, no?
Last one.
There we go, very last one. All right, so you were talking about that the state was sort of modeling things on, on some of the changes that we have made while I've been on the board here. Are they, is the model like we have, are, are they doing like what we're doing now? Or when you had talked about looking at, um, the, the secondary following suit and participating with the elementary-
What, what the new state code is, it's, it's modeled after our code, I mean-
Okay.
I don't know if, as chair, I use some of my influence or not, but they are, so it's, it's more proactive now, and so much of the language that sounds criminal have been reduced-
Yes, good, good.
-removed from the state code.
That punitive piece is taken out.
Punitive piece, right.
Yes.
Um, it, it's not about punishment, it's about discipline, and discipline teaches and guides.
Okay.
And that's what we want to do, and the state code now will have, have that in it. Um, they even have, even though they don't spell it out as code violation categories, they do have categories, um, in, in what, what schools can and cannot do-
Mm-hmm.
... based on a student offense.
Does it still have D-codes, the disorderly?
They, they, they are, it's hard to explain, they are, their code violations now are in like five categories, like behavior that threatens and hurts others, and behavior that disrupts the classroom. Um, but D-codes for all intents and purposes have been removed from state code.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. And Dr. Cashwell, thank you for bringing up Bliss and the, the metrics for some evaluation piece of it, because that is an important piece that I know that this board has asked several times, and we're looking forward to getting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox. I think Reverend Cooper had something else he wanted to add.
Thank you, Ms. Jam, real quick, one question concerning connecting with outside agencies, have we considered the financial impact for our division with, with those collaborative connections as far as the cost implications?
At this point, I would have to say no.
Okay.
But certainly, when we come back, uh, for phase two of this, I will have that answer.
Okay, because, and, and then the joining forces piece, I noticed not listed is the intentional involvement maybe with parents, as far as a part of the disciplinary, um, action process, how we, you know, engaging parents to be more collaborative or inclusive in this process.
And the discipline alone, or this, this process here?
Well, th- this process as far as joining forces, I'm just saying, is there a place for more intentional parental engagement as far as the process is concerned with their student? Does that make sense? Like, how can we better utilize maybe the relationship with the school and the parent for their specific child in relationship to it?
Well, I'm guessing off the top that with the inclusion of family-community engagement, that might, uh, speak to that point-
Mm-hmm.
-and how to get, uh, the family's input, because certainly, we, we want everybody to have a voice.
And, because I know I've spoken to Ms. Bell on many occasions, and, you know, they, they offer many different, um, avenues for parents to get engaged, for even mentoring toward parents.
Right.
But that's something we definitely have to be very proactive and specific about the parental piece in far as engagement.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any, anyone else? Anything else? Well, then, I, I will close by again thanking, as we did before, particularly Mrs. Adams and her team, and the others, thank you so much for coming and listening to the presentation and, uh, representing the good work that you've done over the, not just the past month, but going back in years. Um, and so, please pass that along to the others who may not be able to make it here today.
I will, thank you.
Um, I do, uh, just to echo a few things and maybe, um, add a little, um, at this, you, you're giving a voice to the voiceless in many regards, because the, the, the calls that we get for the most part, and quite often, the, the presentations that are at, um, at the public comment session of board meetings are about the students who are being affected by other students. And so, there's a lot of voice right now for the, for the impact on students that are not being disciplined, but are in the classroom with students who, who, for whatever reason, are, are, are being disruptive. So, this is a counterbalance to that, and it's, uh, both are extraordinarily important, uh, and, um, and we can't lose sight of either, and it, and the work is, is hard, and the, and the vineyard is full of opportunities, and you're definitely toiling in the vineyard on our behalf, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will close with this, which almost everyone touched on. You know, we don't rewrite, we adopt, but we don't rewrite codes of conduct, we certainly don't write professional development, uh, or any of those sorts of things, we get feedback on it, and hopefully, it's, we're able to give some insight from time to time. But what we do have to do every year is the budget, and this is the second committee report we've heard today, and the others as well, and all of those things that you've brought forward have an impact on the budget. And hardly anybody brings forward a presentation, whether it's in this category or some other category, if it's math and science or anything, that's not worthy of consideration in the budget, but it becomes a setting of priorities. So, as we go into the budget process, we have got to early put dollar signs on some of these programs, not because we're weighing them because what's worthy and what's not worthy, but we're weighing them as to what we can afford first. And the sooner we're able to do that, I think the sooner this board's able to do its job, uh, because really, in the, at the end of the day, that's what we can do. And, uh, and beyond that, we had to then allow you and your staff to go accomplish the job. So, we absolutely have to early on in the, translate our goals and our, and our priorities to dollars so that we can then help either, uh, advocate for more dollars, or advocate for how the dollars should be spent that we have. Because I haven't heard a thing, and I don't think anyone has, has, uh, had a contrary opinion as to what we've been offered is important. Uh, but at the same time, we, you know, we're just finishing, we're actually going to adopt today this item, so it's not too late, or not too early, I should say, to begin what will be the 2021 version of this big book. So, uh, Madam Superintendent, I would just finish with that, that for us, we need to start talking about the, the budget, you know, not the budget impact-
Yes.
-because that makes it sound like how we're going to whittle it down, but the, but the opportunity for us to, uh, work with the budget to accomplish some of these things that are being presented, so.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's tremendous work, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might-
Yes, please.
-related to the budget piece, absolutely, so we knew, um, coming, the division staff knew coming at the tail end of the, um, report, even before the subcommittees got to work, that there were a number of things we ought to be able to get to work on right away, and some of those did have budget impacts related to bringing instructional assistants to full-time, to adding some preliminary, um, new positions in special education, and we're able to include those in the proposed budget for, um, the coming fiscal year, and so that, we recognize that's only a step in the direction, and, um, Mr. Sorenson has been very tuned in to the subcommittee work to date, and as we've begun to think about more of a, a five-year in advance planning, um, strategy, are already beginning to think about, you know, holding some room within the budget for recommendations that may come forth, um, from the work related to the subcommittees, and, and I also want to echo my thanks, the subcommittees, we heard from one prior to today, try, prior to today, we've heard from two of the subcommittees today, there are more subcommittees at work, and we'll look forward to staying tuned, and I think, um, you'll notice that many of the, the things that are coming forth in the recommendations echo some items that came out as next steps in the passport, some recommendations that have come forth from our Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, um, which also comprises of community members, so there's some intersection of those items, and, and even between subcommittees, that, you know, for example, the staffing subcommittee compared to the report we heard today, there's some overlap, so those subcommittees will all come together and examine priorities and get that final list of recommendations together as one, um, and bring that back to the board, and of course, that will inform our financial planning going forward, so we look forward to next steps, and I, I again thank the subcommittees for their work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're going to rewind a bit and go back to the item that would have been, um, covered prior to the two review, um, items for special education, and that's 5.03, which is the proposed annual financial plan for fiscal year 1920, and Mr. Sorenson's going to come forth, should the board have, um, any questions, this is an opportunity to discuss, um, and/or answer questions related to that plan, which of course, has been presented, um, a number of times prior to this evening. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Sorenson.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, Kate, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Uh, we have had the budget now before you, uh, several meetings, and it is going to be before you, tonight's meeting for approval, and I will be glad to answer any questions you have before you consider that action tonight.
Members of the board, are there any questions? So, so what we're going to be considering tonight and what will be presented to the public is, just, could you remind us in a, in a nutshell how we got to this place? This is, this is a result of what we sent over to the county.
That's correct. So, um, the superintendent presented her budget on January 24th, we've had time to go back and forth and answer questions, um, from the community, as well as from, from you guys during, uh, between January 24th and now. Uh, we have presented to the county manager what, what the budget is, and we are scheduled to present to the board supervisors on March 20th. So, if you all take action tonight and approve the budget, it will go over to the county and be part of the county manager's budget moving forward, and be before the board supervisors for their consideration. Uh, the calendar, they will, um, they have a public hearing later on in the spring, then they will adopt it, or they're scheduled to adopt it in April, then it will come back to you all for final approval. Uh, of course, at this point, we have compression money in the budget, we do not have any money for an overall salary increase, if that's approved by the board supervisors, so when it comes back to you all later in the spring, any raise that the board supervisor provides will be in that budget before you at that time.
Um, any questions, um, from you, anyone?
Uh, actually, I do have just not a question as much as a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if, I, um, I know that when we're looking at the budget, um, things are so spread out over lots of different categories, so it's oftentimes hard for people to see exactly what we spend on any one particular area of study. So, uh, one thing I was mentioning to the superintendent earlier, um, was that we've been hearing a lot of people are concerned about the Math Science Innovation Center, and so sprinkled all through the budget is STEM education funding, and technology teachers, and STEM teachers, and science funding. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with our science specialists yesterday on this very topic, and so, uh, what I have, what I would like to ask, Madam Superintendent, is if we could look at our budget, and when we, um, if we do approve, um, not participating in the Math Science Center, I would like to see some of that funding that we will have available go specifically to materials and things that classroom teachers can use for STEM education and STEM materials. One of the things that, um, I found so interesting talking to our, um, science specialists is resources and funding for the resources that they need, and I think that's one of the things that we have highlighted that we want to do possibly with that extra funding that we would have, um, for STEM education. So, I just hope we, I know we're looking at that, but I think that our constituents have spoken loud and clear that they would like us to focus on that, so I will, like I said, though, it is hard for somebody to look at this or the big thick book that's also public and find that funding, but I think, um, if we could possibly pull out of the budget some data that we could share with the public on, other than we have, we, you know, we've talked about we're spending $6 million and, on, on STEM funding, but I think too, on programming and materials, I think it might actually help our, our constituents to understand the focus that we do have on science education.
Thank you, Mrs. Augmiron, and, and certainly, your request is noted, and you can count on a commitment, um, on the part of, um, on the part of myself, as well as staff, to continue to make sure that our teachers have all the resources they need, particularly in the area of science, and as noted in the budget, one of our, um, priorities is to be able to restore some of the funding to instructional materials and textbooks that, um, had been, you know, very diminished over the past decade, um, so that there's no question that our teachers will have those materials, particularly science-related, in, in their hands in the classrooms, um, to enable scientific investigation, um, on a frequent basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
A matter, one more question.
Along that same lines, I just hazard to guess that if, when we add all of that up, that's going to STEM or STEAM, it's going to come to over the 1.1 million.
Oh, it's quite a bit more.
Yes.
I feel sure.
So, I think that that's interesting, just the juxtaposition of it, and, um, because that is a priority for all of us, especially with the life ready and the way that we are moving forward with our learner profile. Um, so it, I, I think that it's, the onus is on us to get the word out to our constituents, you know, what we are doing in the field of STEM technology for our students every day now.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you don't mind, I'll-
Yes, ma'am.
-hop in one more thing. Um, I think when we started talking about, um, reallocating funds for MSI to see two other things, one of the things people latched on was, oh, you're just going to reduce the laptop fees, and that's all you're going to do with it, and I think there is so much more to the conversation, and I think we've been trying to get that out there, that our focus, you know, is on STEM, but it's also, it, it's across the board, so I, I don't know, I, I just think if we could, um, pull out of the budget and give that data to and share it, because it is so spread out, it would really help, but, I mean, the focus is there, I just think we need to get it out there a little bit, even more than we have been. But thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we're going to be, go back and forth.
Can I clarify, yeah, you're sounding like you're playing ball here, but I just want to make sure I clarify in that I understand things correctly. I mean, our, our teachers can still do field trips to the Math and Science Center, and our students can still take classes there on their own, though, is that correct?
Under the current model, individual school divisions, um, who are not consortium members, have been able to pay for access to those, but that's under the current model, so I couldn't speak to anything future-related.
Okay, and that, and the science fair that we have, um, participated in, in years, in the Richmond Science Fair, that is not just part of the Math and Science Center, though, isn't it open?
Again, we, we're aware of how the current model is set up, but there could be changes to that, so I wouldn't want to speak for the Math Science Innovation Center in relation to how they'll position-
How they'll adapt.
-the offerings for that.
Okay.
But we certainly want to make sure that, um, the students in Henrico, and really across the region, um, in Region One, have every opportunity to be a part of the science competitions that lead and funnel up into the state-level competitions that our students deserve to and have the right to participate, so we'll do everything to make sure that we're positioning ourselves as a region, um, again, in partnership with Chesterfield and some other divisions, to make sure that, that there's representation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I add a comment, please?
You sure can, sir.
Thank, uh, Ms. Pike, you're actually correct on your, your million-dollar number. So, what we've done is, I think is very exciting, this budget, we, uh, the Math Science Center, $600,000 has been redirected back into the classroom for textbooks and other, other digital material. Uh, we also have added $300,000 to the base budget, so it's 900,000, um, we have $100,000 going to increase school operating budgets, and we also have $100,000 going towards, uh, school operating budgets. We also have $100,000 going towards innovative grants, assisting help with those grants. We have a lot of money going back into the classroom, and as Ms. Ogborne pointed out, this process is stretched over a long time. But back during the budget presentation, we did note that that our textbook budget is down to about $750,000. Pre-recession was $2.4 million. So this budget takes a huge step of putting money back back into the classroom, just as you suggested.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Sorenson, I really appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Next up, we have a number of items under operations, two of which will be a review of the schematic designs of two projects. First, it'll be the Brooklyn Area Elementary School schematic design, followed by a review of the Tucker and Highland Springs Replacement High School schematic designs, and then followed by a review of contracts to purchase wetland and stream mitigation credits for the Highland Springs High School replacement. So I know Mr. Shiroki is joined by Susan Moore and Stephen Halsey, who will begin those presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. It is indeed a pleasure. It seems as if it was almost yesterday that we were awarding the A&E contract, not only for the Brooklyn Area Elementary School, but for the replacement of Tucker and Highland Springs High Schools. You've heard the introduction with Mr. Halsey, who is the principal architect with Mosley, who will be co-presenting with me as long as Mrs. Moore being up here, our director of construction and maintenance. This has been a team effort, and we do have some folks in the audience that I would like to recognize, respectively, first of all, the instructional leader of Holiday Elementary, Mrs. Kim Olson is in attendance today, as well as Mrs. Michelle Loveland, one of our capital project managers, Dr. Nicole Avencia, a capital project manager, and Mr. Adam Byfield. They're working together collaboratively, not only on this project, but the replacements of the two high schools in addition to all the other projects we have. And then obviously, I'll introduce the principals of Tucker and Highland Springs for the second presentation. As we've done in many years past, working with schematic design presentations, I want to just overview an agenda about the process that we've had. It's been a long process, but it's happened very quickly thus far. I want to start with the project mission for this elementary school, the process that we've gone through. Mr. Halsey will then go over some proposed site plans, floor plans, phasing that's being proposed. The disclaimer that I'm going to put out, knowing how quickly we are moving with these projects, is what you were approving today is probably about 95% complete when it comes to the ideas that we have collectively put together with our design committees. But again, as we go through our plan of development with the county, some things may be adjusted slightly, but what you're seeing today is the full concept and the intent that has come from the superintendent and all of our stakeholders. And then we'll get into next steps. Where do we go from this point pending your approval later this evening? So our mission was very clear. We were to construct a one- or a two-story new school adjacent to Holiday Elementary School. We were asked to explore opportunities to share space between both facilities, the existing Holiday as well as the new school, and then to maximize the building's flexibility with new spaces. A word you're going to hear a lot and is new with our new construction, it started with the renovations and the addition at Glen Allen, but really building in collaborative spaces, spaces where people can engage, to where they can move from the classroom to another area as a subgroup and then go back into the classroom. So you're going to see that through the themes of the projects that we're presenting today. Our process started back in June, where we held a series of five community input meetings. We had two meetings each between June 7th and June 14th, where we met with staffs and I will say school stakeholders, many of the parents who were very active within those schools, where they provided us input. As well as in August, we had a more general community meeting for many of our citizens, not fewer parents, but many of them were residents within the school's boundaries and wanted to learn more and give input and also share with us the history of Holiday Elementary and what it means to them and their community. We started our two pre-design updates with you back in May and one in August, where we showed the concepts of where we got to where we are, and you guys gave us direction to proceed. And then ultimately, in September, we awarded the contract for the architectural engineering design. The architectural engineering design team, again, they started the initial project programming in early November. They've held a series of design workshops that Mr. Halsey will walk you through, as well as having some follow-up program meetings and beginning the phasing meetings. So we're at a point where as soon as this project is the schematics are approved, we will move into the design development, where we'll begin to sit down with folks within the buildings, educational specialists, and really hear from them the fine details of how the school is to be developed beyond the schematic concept, and then we'll get into construction documentation and bidding. So our steering committee, there are two primary steering committees that we used. The first is the project steering group, and these are the principal decision-makers who really with the mission keep the group focused and answer some of those high-level decisions to keep the project moving forward. And you see the representation there. As well as the actual elementary school design committee, which consists of school staff, support staff, central office, educational specialists, support services folks, all providing input on what the needs are for the current elementary programming, but specifically how we can enhance the Holiday Elementary School community environment in making it a world-class educational center. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Halsey, who can walk through the design process and then show you the exciting schematics.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you all today. It's a very exciting process and project as well, and certainly important to the Holiday community. We like to begin each project, especially a new project, with a design workshop process, as Mr. Shiroki identified at the design committee that we asked Central Office to put together for us and to really engage them in a series of workshops to solicit their input about some ideas about how the new Brooklyn Area Elementary School should function and how it should serve those teachers and students and staff. The purpose of the first workshop was really to go through an idea mining and project visioning session, where we prompted the group with a series of questions and asked for their responses back, and went through basically to generate some consensus among the group about really big-picture ideas about what would ultimately govern the project. You can see there are a lot of the ideas and words there, really very rapid-fire kind of exercise that we go through, and then we actually asked the group to actually vote on those ideas, which establishes the consensus. And then we start to develop those ideas and consensus items into threads. We then charged two teachers on the design committee to actually start to develop, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, a project mission statement that we can then refer back to throughout the course of the project to make sure that we're staying within the boundaries and lanes that were established by the project committee. And we can also develop a really interesting graphic that can be used as T-shirts, graphics throughout the process that Ms. Olson can then use. The words here are, the larger the word, the more important it is. It was it was the words were mentioned the most often throughout the design workshop process, and we capture that in a little wordle graphic that we can then use throughout the process. Again, in this first workshop, we generated a lot of site plan ideas. I won't go through these individually, but just a lot of interesting ideas. We divided the workshop group into four small groups that our staff then facilitated some design work. One group was focused on site plans. Another group was focused on floor plans. I'll get to in just a minute.
Yeah. So when we go back, and we just want to show you, when you're looking at the site plans themselves, these massing of programs that you want to have in a school, the one thing that we did come up with a determination, and obviously, you've got to narrow it down, you've got to come up what's best, given the school site and the needs. And with that, we developed the idea to have one bus loop that would feed both schools at once, and to develop one that is accessible from two geographic areas of the building, as well as being able to provide enough space for children to be able to safely load and unload at the school bus loop. One school entrance, this is something you saw where safety was one of the key words. We've determined from the very beginning, it was our goal to have one entrance from the bus loop or an entrance to the school. The fact that we want people to be able to come into the school, no matter what grade their child is in, and it's one-stop shopping, that they can get that, they don't have to say, you need to go to the left, or you need to go to the right. So we focused on that. As well as having the service off of the bus loop. Again, one of the themes you're going to see is that when we do any site development, we want to separate parent vehicles from buses, from service vehicles, and in our high schools, even student drivers. We want to separate all of that. So we want the service loop to be off of the bus loop area. And then the fact that we may not have to connect the bus loop to Galaxy Road, and you're going to see ultimately where we landed with that, knowing that Empala, which is the road behind it, actually has a signal down at Hilliard Road. With the building, we wanted one reception waiting area for parents as well, not only with the entrance, but when they come in, there's again, one-stop shopping. Instructionally, the pod approach was preferred and was supported by the elementary instructional staff. The library and the gym were two areas that were very important to the school, of being able to have a facility that all the students within both facilities can take advantage of, and you will see that shortly, as well as what's called a learning stair to be included. And this is a kind of a set of stairs that's within the school's library that allows for reading time and for group activities to occur, very similar to an auditorium approach, but on a very smaller scale.
Ms. Shiroki, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
Ms. Cocke has a question.
I just wanted to, if you could clarify for our listening audience what a pod approach is. That may not be known to everybody.
Yeah, a pod approach, and I will allow Dr. Teigen to jump in if she needs to, but a pod approach is where you have a group, be it a grade level, it could be a grade level, it could be an academic area, where they're all within a pod, a group, to where the classes are all combined together, so that if it's a third-grade teacher, they can access the other third-grade teacher adjacent to them very quickly, and they work as a group. So the kids stay within those vicinities. And again, depending upon the design of your school, it could be instructionally, or it could be by grade level, or by content.
So again, a sample of the site plan work, as Mr. Shiroki just went through, basically the consensus items. So those are some of the givens that came out of that initial design workshop. We went through a series of site plan options, just work content and process. Same thing with the floor plans as well. Again, this was done over a series of about two months and three additional design workshops, where we engaged that design committee in some detailed work sessions, and then again, started to develop some consensus. The last workshop, we started to settle down into two different ideas. One I'll go through in a little more detail in just a moment, that option 5.1. You can see option 8.1. You can see there are the numbers of options that we developed along the way, just to make sure that we were exploring everything that the committee wanted us to explore. And then the same thing with the floor plan as well, and you can start to see a little hints of 5.1 with the pod approach, and I'll go through that in a little more detail in just a minute as well. So these were these were unanimous decisions that came out of the design workshop process. The committee really honed in on these two, one, the site plan and the floor plan concept at the conclusion of our four sessions together. So with the proposed site plan, Mr. Shiroki mentioned a little bit about some of the guiding concepts. First and foremost is safety and separation of traffic. So you can see the proposed new bus loop, which is coming off that bend in Empala Road. Again, one bus loop for both schools will provide access points into the kind of the southwest or west-southwest side of the existing Holiday, and then an entrance into the new Brooklyn Area Elementary School connecting to it with buses there. Again, trying to separate traffic, also wanted to make sure that we really discouraged opportunities for kids to cross pavement areas. So you can see playground areas just beyond to the left of the U-shaped new part of the school with some paved playground areas, so those students do not have to cross pavement. The same thing with the existing Holiday School. You can see the arrangement of those playground areas that can be accessed from the existing Holiday School without having access pavement. We'll be looking at expanding the parking lot to the west of the existing parking lot there on the north end of the site.
Ms. Olson, can I interrupt you for a minute? Ms. Cocke has a question.
So the white is the existing Holiday?
Yes.
And that is that you've got some parking lot area there, or paved area, and that's Galaxy?
Yes.
And then where you have the bus loop, which looks like there's a bunch of yellow buses in it?
That's correct.
That's coming off of Empala?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure to kind of get this set up. So the white is the existing Holiday. The rest of it there that we see is is our Holiday 2.0, is our new part. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And if I could, and again, I think this is good for clarification, we've been referring this to two schools, but in reality, we're saying that because you have an existing and then we're building. What I will say is in addition to Holiday, it is one Holiday Elementary School. But for us, in being able to describe this so that you understand existing and new, you'll hear that reference. But again, we want to make it very clear, there will not be, at this point, two different named schools. It will be Holiday Elementary, grades pre-K through 5.
That's why I call it Holiday 2.0.
Yes, absolutely. In terms of proposed floor plans, you can see the entry points there coming from the north, as Mr. Shiroki mentioned, one access point to the entire school Holiday 2.0. Again, security protocol, we'll have security vestibule, a series of protocols to make sure folks are vetted for enter the school. The gymnasium and the performance platform there immediately to the left of that, really basically a main public corridor as you come and turn right as you get into the building. We are going to repurpose, we're proposing to repurpose some of the existing space and very modest areas within the existing Holiday confined to the existing dining space that we'll use for part of dining. We'll also include a community room that can be accessed by the community after hours that's there off the main kind of the main public corridor. We'll backfill that space with some storage and also a new teacher workroom. We're planning to use the existing platform within that dining, existing dining space as a new art room and an art courtyard, which you can start to see being suggested just below art. New dining space, expanded dining space, we can comfortably account for the 1,100 students that might ultimately be within Holiday 2.0. A new kitchen, new mechanical room. Then in terms of the academic areas, a big focal point, as you come and turn right coming down the main public corridor, is that learning stair, which is a student gathering space, an opportunity for students to experience some public speaking activities, for reading activities, for larger group congregation, and that'll also be a circulation element that gets you upstairs. Again, the library being a main focal point that is kind of the connective piece between the academic wings. You can start to see the way the pod approach is working in both those two academic wings, with a series of six classrooms that are working around a collaborative learning space, which will have services. You can do STEM in that area, you can do small group work in there, one-on-one teaching in those spaces again. So those six classrooms in each of those two wings can have access to that extended learning area. Upstairs, basically a mirror of what's happening downstairs, again, with two other academic pods, with the same collaborative, open collaborative, flexible learning space that will have technology, writing surfaces, the ability for students to use those spaces in a variety of ways, lots of flexible furniture, and then again, that learning stair that connects downstairs and upstairs. Phasing is very important. This is a pretty tricky job in terms of phasing, because we are utilizing some existing dining space in the kitchen where the existing Holiday is, is really not a great place for the addition. So phase one is to construct a new dining space, new food service space, a new mechanical space. Get those services established so that we can leave the services that currently serve existing Holiday undisturbed during this portion of the project, as well as begin construction on the two-story academic portion of the new building. Phase two will basically be the turnover. We'll turn over the new dining space and new kitchen space and have the existing Holiday students be able to utilize that space when that space is being utilized, and we can start the demolition of the existing kitchen and the backfill and renovation of the existing dining space, and then continue the construction of the two-story academic space. Some of this work will happen next summer, summer of 2020, when we'll start to do the electrical transition. So we'll have new electrical service way to backfeed the existing Holiday, and again, get those services completely out of the way by the beginning of 20, of the school year, beginning in August of 2020. And then finally, the last phase is really just completing the project from September of 2020 through August of 2021. That's the completion of the two-story academic piece and the construction of the new main entry and the new gymnasium portion of the building.
So with that being said, our next steps, pending the approval this evening, will be that we will move into design development. We'll submit our plan of development to the county later in April, begin working with bid documents, putting it out, advertising it to the contracting community. Our anticipation is to award in the month of either September or October. Construction would begin roughly 30 days upon the school board's award, and we would anticipate a school opening of September 2021. So we've gone through a lot of information, but at this time, we could answer any questions that you might have for any of the folks that are here today.
Thank you very much, members of the board. Are there questions?
So with the, what will the increased capacity be compared to what it is now?
We are looking to double the size of the school.
So that's given in consideration of how our county's growing rapidly going forward. Hopefully, we're looking at development of our schools differently than we have, because how quickly we reach capacity, whether it be middle of a high school.
It is, and that's a very good point. You know, by going from 550 to possibly 1,100 students, when you get to that, and just as an example, we looked at one bus loop, you have to be able to look at, how do you operate a school, not only instructionally but programmically, when it comes to the daily operation? And how do you move large masses of children into a cafeteria, into a library, into a gymnasium space? So just as you have asked us to look at for future projects in our CIP, of looking at possibly renovate or even replace, we are looking at our school sites, and we are have to be very proactive in when we build our new schools, looking at where could we add in addition when we're actually building a new school on a new site, where could we expand in the future and make sure that we preserve that space, knowing that 15, 20 years down the road, or even sooner, you might that may be necessary. So that's a very good point, sir.
I do, but okay.
You sure?
I didn't, I don't want to.
Mrs. Ogborne?
Thank you. I'm looking at the admin space. I was just curious how, I assume you've got two principals, two, you know, two of everything. Is that big enough for, I mean, or is this part of the two-story part? And I'm not sure. It's hard to tell from the little maps, you know?
We believe that it is sufficient. You know, right now, the model has been, be it, it's going to be one school, the focus is to have one principal, potentially two associate or two assistant principals, and then have the appropriate support staff. But one of the things that the committee brought out is everyone shouldn't be in the office. The folks that directly deal with parents, again, that one-stop shopping, those should be, but there's any support services, any other adult personnel that do not have classes of 20, 25 kids, we want to make sure that they are dispersed throughout the building. So we do believe that it would be sufficient at this point, but that's a good point. Those are the things we had to weigh, because if we were looking at a design where ultimately... Those are the things we had to weigh, because if we were looking at a design where ultimately you did have two separate administrations, the office, there would have been some inefficiency there, and you would have to have more space.
Well, a telling thing is Kim hasn't passed out yet, so she looks like she's okay.
She's been a great cheerleader through the process.
Oh, I bet, I bet. Okay, now, I think you've covered the rest of it. Go ahead. I'm good.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Okay. First, thank you. This is super exciting, and I'd like to thank the committee. I know that not a lot of them are here today, but Ms. Olson has been absolutely wonderful to work with and to carry this vision forward of one school. And thrilled and delighted that she has taken the helm here and just guiding all of her students and her teachers in the right direction and meeting their needs. I wanted to just bring up, when you're looking at this, I love the way, for safety purposes, that we do have the one office, but that we also have that vestibule so that you can come into the gym for after hours and you're not able to walk through all of the school, like we do in our high schools, but to have that blocked off in the elementary school. And I think that is wonderful. So thank y'all for being very thoughtful about that. And I also wanted to just make sure everybody heard what you were saying in that the new dining hall, the new cafeteria should be, we're planning for it to be operational for fall of 2020.
Yes.
So that would be the year ahead, and that our current students at Holiday would get to use that for a full year before the new and improved Holiday, if you will, opens.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, good. Anything else on this side? Very good. Thank you, thank you for the information.
All right, I'll let them proceed on with the next schematic review related to the replacement high school projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. We have the same design team. Obviously, Mr. Halsey is representing this project as well with his firm. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce, we do have the principal of Tucker High School, Mr. Art Raymond is in attendance today, and I know that Mr. Ken White wanted to be here, but I believe he got tied up and was not able to make it. But I do want to start off, just as I said with, and Stephen said, with Ms. Olson, both of these projects, with the project team, but specifically the direct instructional leadership of the principals is why we're here today and why we've been able, especially for the replacement of these two schools, to be here in such a timely fashion. Because, you know, we come up with ideas, but they have to vet them, they have to implement them, and they have to talk with their staffs and the committees and people they've given leadership to. Because what you'll see today, there are far more people involved than what's even shown on the slide presentation for these projects, but we cannot thank them enough for their leadership. Again, very similar process, want to talk about the mission, process programming. Mr. Halsey will go over the site, floor, interior images. We're excited to be able to show you how we're going to be able to take the existing prototype and bring it up to modern-day standards, be it from the past 10 years, and then talk about next steps, be it this is a very aggressive project. Our mission in the beginning was obviously two new schools, Highland Springs and Tucker High Schools, and we were charged by Dr. Cashwell, first of all, to meet the needs of 21st century globally competitive students, but we're also asked to provide environments that produce life-ready graduates. Again, take these two schools and make them the schools, instructionally, programmically, that takes us into the future for the County of Henrico. Each school, we were told, had a budget of $80 million. We were asked to build and replace each school on the existing sites while the current schools remain in operation. We were asked to consider additional capacity at both schools, and I will say, we were charged to open both schools for our students in the September of 2021. In September 2021, you will see, for many of the decisions that we've made, that's a hard date, and so a lot of decisions and a lot of the drive we have revolves around being able to accomplish that in such a short time. So again, just briefly to talk about the processes in our pre-design, it was announced by, collectively by the school board and the general government, that the two new schools, back in September. Internally, the county staff, our school facility staff, we all met together with the manager's leadership to talk about how we would be able to accelerate and work together for these projects. And then we advertised the RFP for the A&E Design Services in October. At the same time, we held some staff and high school community meetings where the principals invited many of their parents and folks associated with the schools to come in just to provide some input before we hired the architect of what they needed, what they wanted in a new school. And you're going to see that there's examples where both gave very similar needs, but then there's some were very unique to the school, as well as then in December, we awarded the contract for A&E Services. In receiving staff and community feedback, I'm going to bounce a little between Tucker and Highland Springs, but for Tucker High School, you see, these were the ideas that came up and surfaced that were, again, most predominant: safety, accessibility, outdoor access, unique identity, ROTC facilities, unique identities when it comes to engaging environments, and then flexibility. But one of the unique things at Tucker is they want to, they have a tradition, they have a senior wall, so they want to ensure that the school keeps that tradition going. At Highland Springs High School, you see very similar items. Again, you see ROTC, technology access, open spaces, wider halls, you know, that is an interior school versus a campus-style school. That was very important to them. Again, unique identity, you see that again. They were concerned, one unique thing for them was the impact to the athletic programs. They wanted to make sure, given the fact that they're operating in the school and they have their athletic programs spread across a good portion of the campus, they just wanted to know, will that construction impact the phasing? Will we have to relocate and things of that nature? So that came up, and obviously, that has come up with Tucker as well, just not initially. Our project timeline, we started with the initial programming meeting, and then you will see that many meetings that Mosley and our project teams have created, going all the way up through February 13th, where we've looked at food services, working with our instructional leadership for curriculum, the site plan, looking at where we're going to position the portions of the facilities, and then looking at expansion with electives such as CTE, and then obviously, looking at sustainability and integrated designs. How are we going to continue to make these buildings as sustainable as all of our previous schools that we've built? Our steering committees, a little larger than the elementary school, but you see, these are the senior decision-makers, respective from, directly with the school leadership of the two principals, central office staff, and then our facilities group. And then we have the Tucker High School Design Committee, which consists, again, of staff from the high school, as well as educational specialists and support services that all have shared ownership within the Tucker campus. They held a, not a community meeting, but a programming meeting where what their purpose was is to look at the site adapt of the Glenn Allen High School model and to look for spaces, the needs that they had that's unique to their school, and where could we capture that within an existing footprint? So that was really the focus for them, so they understand the differences between the two, but also where their needs are and how they vary, so they could begin geographically to understand how we might be able to adjust the building from an interior perspective. Highland Springs, very similar. Here are the design committee members, again, school staff, educational specialists, and support services folks. They did the same thing. You know, you're going to find there's going to be a slide where there are things that are unique to both schools, or are similar to both schools, and then there are items that are unique between the two schools. So they had to talk about that. Tucker High School has a welcome center. Highland Springs has community and schools. It's a smaller program, but it's a program that's developing. So we just need to talk about how we're going to fit all of that within a footprint. So here's a slide that just demonstrates, this is more for the public and for folks to be able to see, that there are spaces that are common between both Tucker and Highland Springs, and it ranges from the curriculum, some of the electives. ROTC is one that, for the prototype that was chosen, it didn't have ROTC within that design. So one of the tasks were, you got to find space within an existing prototype to fit ROTC. The welcome center. Both schools have specialty centers, but they have a welcome center in addition. So you have to find that space, and we wanted to have the input, but really understand the flow of how the schools operate when it comes to all of their instructional programming. But then we have spaces that are unique, and I just want to pinpoint these. The IB program at Tucker, the Center for Spanish Language and Global Citizenship, the ACA program for social sciences, as well as the welcome center. And then at Highland Springs, they have the Center for Engineering, the ACA for Business Administration, as well as the Communities and Schools program. When it comes to athletic and public spaces, both schools will have a gymnasium with three courts upon the completion of the project. They will have fitness rooms that are part of the school. They will have an auxiliary gym that could be used for volleyball, wrestling, basketball. They will have athletic stadiums for football and all the sports on those competitive fields, field houses, concession buildings. You'll see in another slide, but Highland Springs will need new tennis courts. The tennis courts are going, the existing tennis courts are going to have to be relocated with the placement of the building. As well as one that I think our team is very excited about is the auditoriums. When you look at the auditoriums at Tucker and Highland Springs, they're from the 50s and the 60s. They can't even hold one class for an event. They, you know, the gymnasium has to be used, and it's very difficult to even hold all students and parents in the gymnasiums. Their auditorium will be comparable, very comparable to the size of Glenn Allen's auditorium, as well as having community and meeting rooms that those, both schools do not have at this point, other than just using teachers' classrooms after hours, as well as having two cafeteria spaces where large events can be held, from fairs to, I will say, Henrico reads. All of these programs, just as you saw at Henrico High School, when we created that common core, Highland Springs and Tucker will have the same common core as Glenn Allen High School, they will be able to host large-scale events that they've never been able to, just because of the physical size and the layout of the building. So we're very excited about that. And I know the schools are, because there are many events that they have been precluded in having just because of space limitations. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Halsey, who can walk you through site plans, floor plans, and even a few elevation shots.
So with site plans, I'll just kind of walk through the limits of construction, kind of a rough schematic of what the site plan is, and we've kind of, and then we have some more presentation kind of images. Here Highland Springs, you can see outlined in the blue dash line, the limits of construction. As Mr. Shiroki mentioned, you can see the football, the existing football stadium and the existing set of tennis courts, the two pieces of property that are being purchased along Airport Drive, which would ultimately become the primary location of the existing building. Again, trying to retain as much as we could with the existing baseball field and the softball field, and certainly the existing school remaining and utilizing those parking areas. So in terms of an initial layout, with the vacation of Bill Street, utilizing that existing curb cut as the main entry off Airport Drive, locating the building, you know, so it has a really prominent kind of image off Airport Drive, and then organizing the site elements accordingly, having sufficient queue space. You can see how it kind of works with the new pavement, the location of the new tennis courts, the new orientation of the football field, turn 90 degrees back in that area, which really starts to consolidate all of the athletic facilities. The introduction of two new smaller practice fields, and that existing field house would remain, but we would be providing a new field house and new concessions building there located at the east end of the stadium. So again, all the athletic components really get organized and in a very compact, efficient sort of way. And this is the prettier picture. You can see there, again, the series of sidewalks around the new school. The existing Highland Springs, they're located in yellow, which would remain. The structures that would remain are there in yellow, which includes the existing field house and then the dugout and support structures for softball and football. A bus loop would be entering off Nine Mile Road there through the existing site there off to that site edge to try and limit the disturbance to existing Highland Springs High School, with however that might be repurposed in the future, and then again, parking there along Airport Drive. And just a few three-dimensional shots, you can just see how the site lays out in a very organized way, again, trying to organize athletics in one general area, bus loop in one area, and then parking in another. So again, separation of traffic, students' traffic separated from bus traffic, student parking is separated from staff parking, again, to try and make those sequence of events as the school operates very clear and safe. Pushing gears to Tucker, Tucker is a significantly more difficult site to try and solve. Not only will the existing school remain, there's significant topography on that site that we're all aware of, and really, the available land to build a new school is just much more limited compared to Highland Springs. As you can see there, again, in the light blue dash line, the limits of construction, we will be taking the gymnasium offline, and we've been working very carefully with Chris Brown, the Athletic Director at Tucker, so that we make sure those services can happen somewhere else during the course of construction. And again, using that existing practice field along Param Road and the existing football stadium as the primary construction site for the new Tucker High School. In locating there, you may notice too, that the floor plan's been mirrored, just to make sure we have the proper orientation with getting the front door. Essentially, we're oriented the way the existing front door is located now toward that parking lot there at the corner of Home View and Param, and then having the academic spaces have a nice prominent visual along Param Road. In terms of sequencing, we'll complete the new building first and then proceed with the demolition of the existing school, which will be, then be used for the location, construction of the new football stadium, an additional practice field, some extended parking, as well as the, a new field house and concessions. The bus loop will remain primarily where it is, although it may, will be reconstructed just to account for grading. Again, that's the primary challenge on this site, is to mitigate grades while minimizing and hopefully not having any retaining walls at all throughout the course of the site. And the more presentation quality there, you can see there, all those elements. The existing tennis courts remain, as well as baseball and softball. Those facilities really remain unchanged and undisturbed throughout the course of construction.
So with that, Mr. Halsey mentioned that there are, when it comes to storm, stormwater management, the topography between the two schools, Highland Springs' land is very flat, so it's a matter of, can we get the water off the property? Whereas Tucker, it's, can we slow the water down as it's coming down the hill? And there's going to be a balance there, but, you know, some of the project site considerations, you know, we put this out here, again, we're building schools on occupied sites, and we've renovated schools occupied. And here, there will be, just as we do with safety and security, there'll be a hard fence that separates. Construction entrance egress will be managed so that it's not interacting with the school as much as possible. We are working within the available site acreage, and you see that Tucker is fairly tight and compact compared to the additional land that we were fortunate to be able to work towards purchasing at Highland Springs. The site drainage, again, that's a big challenge when it comes to budgetary impact. You know, not only are you having to deal with the water that's moving on and off the property, but you're having to deal with, at Tucker specifically, you're going to have to take dirt away in one phase, but then bring dirt back in order to be able to have the school as flat as possible to minimize the size of retaining walls that you might need. And that will be a complex project in doing so with, when it comes to the civil side. Again, we mentioned that the, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I will hop. You can go back to the last picture before you leave that. So the goal is, from what I understand, from looking at, because it's not flat now, so you're thinking that where the bus loop is, the football field and the school will be flat, and then the front parking lot's going to slope down like it does now?
There'll be a series of ramps and stairs where needed, but the topography, we're trying to establish some terrace levels within the site, so it's not going to be a completely flat site that's, I don't think we can pull that off, but, because we're all familiar with the topography, it's very difficult. But as Mr. Shiroki was saying, we're trying to deal with grading just in gentle slopes and establishing some level topographic areas for big functions of the site, and then just stitch those together with larger ramp complexes and stairs, so we can eliminate any need for retaining walls, which is a big cost driver in terms of site cost.
Right. Well, and, but what I'm sitting here thinking about is accessibility and being sure that when somebody's coming to a football game, that when they park in the parking lot, that, you know, it's not, it's a gentle enough slope that a person in a wheelchair, for example, can get up to the football field. You don't want stairs, obviously, so I assume that is going to be achieved.
It is.
The site will be brought up to full ADA compliance and would allow for any mitigation that has to occur.
Okay. The, at the end of, on the right side, it's kind of cut off in this picture, where there's green space next to the football field, is that a practice field?
That is a new practice field.
Okay, because I know at Highland Springs, they had two. I just wanted to be sure we have one.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, keep going.
If I could, that practice field that's between the residence that are on Home View and the stadium that you're seeing, we've purposely put that as a buffer for distance. You know, we'll use LED lighting, which will not have what I call the light pollution that spreads into... that spreads into their backyards, as lights in the parking lot probably do today. But, you know, sound, it's probably going to be very similar to what they've been experiencing for the past 50-plus years.
Okay, because I have been...
But it will be the distance, at least, they don't have cars parked right behind their house.
Right, because I've been contacted by the neighbors already, asking for information they're concerned. Of course, I get it. Are we planning, or are we even there yet, with planning on informational meetings for neighbors?
Yes. A few slides down, but as all of our projects through the public plan of development process, we send out mailings to all adjacent property owners and communities that are directly impacted by any school project that we have. So there would be community meetings that are specific to the residents, not parents of children that attend the school, but anyone who lives in the perimeter, so that we can provide that information.
Yeah, because I'm already hearing from them, so good.
We want to wait, though, until we get further in the POD process, so that we can really give them something that is not 95%, but it is 99.
Sure.
And they know exactly what the distance is going to be between a Leland Cypress tree that's being planted and their fence line. We want to be able to spell that out to them, because that's obviously most concerning.
Right, thank you.
So with that, I just want to briefly go over the athletic program impacts between both schools. And again, as Stephen said, the ADs, the principals have been very instrumental in being forward-thinking as far as how we can address the relocation. Both schools, they will not have stadiums. It will be three years for Tucker High School, as well as two years at Highland Springs. The reason Tucker has three years, you build the school in two years, the children occupy the school, you then tear down the existing facility, and then build your stadium. That would be in the third year. So fall of 2021, we would be working on the football field. At Highland Springs, that would all be together, because we're able to reorient the field. So in the two-year construction window, they would be able to have their competitive field built within the time of the school itself. The field house access, Tucker will be losing theirs for three years as well. It's within the impact area. As well as Highland Springs will not have use of tennis courts for the two years that the school's being built. So again, their stadium and their tennis courts are only two years because of, again, the acreage that's available to them. But for all schools, these facilities will be equally comparable and meet the unique needs that both schools desire.
So I'll spend a little time...
Yes.
Stop right there. So how are other schools, are we finding space somewhere else? Are other schools coming to the rescue, County Parks and Rec? I mean, are they finding places so that they will continue their sports during those years?
Yes. There's a variety of things that they have looked at, and it is, you could play all games away, obviously, at the opposing schools, or you could have neutral sites. Obviously, for Tucker High School, you have the turf fields that have been installed at Hermitage and at Freeman High School, as well as you have Glover Park, that's within the vicinity. At Highland Springs, you have Verona High School with a turf field, as well as Henrico High School's turf field will be ready for start of school in '19. So there will be schools that will have a field availability, as well as working with Wreckin' Parks for any additional field space, and looking at even other high schools and even middle schools of what space we can use to help accommodate that. The competitive events is really not the greatest challenge that I see. It's trying to find the least path of resistance for daily practice. We are encouraging staffs, I mean, going as far as getting their CDLs to help with transportation, so that we can give their school a bus. They can, as soon as the bell rings, within 15 minutes, the kids in the sport can get on the bus and go to that location, so they're not waiting 30 minutes for the high school drop-off to bring the buses back to get them. We will do that, but we're looking at any way we can to try to minimize that disruption for the students and for the extracurricular programming.
Good, thank you.
Reverend Cooper?
So in staying in that vein, I know for the high school level that revenues generated by sports, specifically football games, go a long way in assisting the schools to meet their athletic budgets. So what are we going to do to compensate for the loss of revenue, whether it be concession, ticket sales, things of nature for that extended period of time?
So no definitive answer has been decided, but we're working with Dr. Tygen and her staff in developing a good response. And I don't think there's one answer, but I think that the schools that are opposing, you know, the traditional revenue model is, when you come to my school, I take the profit. When you come to my school, the other school, they take the profit. They're going to have to look at developing some, if it's 50-50, 60-40, they're going to have to be able to come up with that. However, if they play at a neutral school, then that would be, and I'll use the example, if Tucker played at Hermitage, let's say on a Saturday, Hermitage wasn't using the facility, that could be a full Tucker event, and anything that is sold or done at that event, tickets could go directly to Tucker High School. So there's varying models, but John Carroll, our Director of Student Activities and the ADs and the principals, they've all expressed that. And if we have to look at ways in which we can help offset and support from a central office level, we just need to explore all of that. But we do recognize that that is the lifeblood, many times the revenue that comes from all the competitive field events, is what supports many of the athletic and extracurricular programming.
But before you leave on that particular point, it's, when you say it's the lifeblood, in the big scheme of things, the dollars that we're talking about are not huge. So we certainly, but the impact is huge. It outstrips the dollars, really, because it's, in the case of a booster club, it's what allows the booster club to help all of the sports get the extra equipment and the things that makes a difference across the board. So, and I know, as by way of anecdote, for example, when youth sports have tried to play, have played some of their key games at high school facilities, you know, all of the booster club's material, all of its hot dogs and everything else is stored in the building where the concession stand is, and if a youth group organization then tries to move in on that, it just, it doesn't work. It doesn't work just by saying, y'all figure out how to get along. So if it means, I don't know what it means, if it means some food trailers under lease for some period of time, you're talking about getting CDLs, well, you know, we rotate buses out, these are buses that would not be going from one end of the county to the other, they'd be going short distances. So maybe as we take some of our buses out of service, maybe we can identify some of the best of those that can be parked at the school for that, for the sole purpose. And if we need to identify, you know, if we need to provide an additional stipend for that transportation, then we should do it. We shouldn't, we shouldn't hold, we shouldn't let a few thousand dollars, in the big scheme of things, wag the whole dog, because that's where the, that, while all the great things are going on with the construction, the world will grind to a halt if the day-to-day activities of the students are unable to be met. So let's don't lose sight of that. I know we're not, but whatever it takes, I think that we need, because when we say whatever it takes in this circumstance, it's not a lot of money. You know, it's, so we need to think about those things and find a way to say yes in every case that we possibly can, so.
Can I interject?
Yes, please do.
And I would like for us to not only consider sports, because we have convocation at Tucker is in the gym, we have school plays, there's chorus, there's so many activities, it's not just sports, so we're going to have to look at how we make all of those things happen. And I'm sure Mr. Raymond has quite the long list of these things. I mean, we haven't begun to talk about this part of it, but I think we have to factor it in as we go forward, because this is such a tight timeline that we're actually working with. It seems like, you know, when you say 2021, it's such a long, but it's not. It will be here before we know it, and these kids, especially at Tucker, losing their gym in June. There's a lot that happens in that gym, and, you know, I think back, you know, we just had convocation in there and that kind of thing. I just think we're going to have to think outside of the box to provide a home for those things, because that's so important to the school spirit and stuff that you've got to maintain during construction. So it's a long list, but yeah, thank you.
To finish up, we can't just say you're getting a new school in two years, because that's two, that's 50% of a kid's high school career.
That's right.
And so he or she will enjoy coming back at their 10-year reunion, but they will remember forever the fact that they didn't have this, didn't have that, or was so inconvenient.
But if you think about it, the freshmen at Tucker will not go to another football game at Tucker, even after, and it won't happen until after they're graduated.
Their senior year.
Senior year.
Well, but you said if...
Three years.
Three years.
You said three years, so at the beginning of, yeah, if the next year's freshman, when the football field goes away, they won't see another football game at Tucker, because you said it would be two years for the school, third year, their senior year...
Three years starting this fall, so their freshman year is year one, sophomore's year two, junior is year three.
Senior.
barring anything, not allowing us to open September of 2021, they should see that. Now, football potentially, you know, I'll put it out there, stadium might be impacted, maybe delayed. We could have torrential rains come through and delay us, but our goal would be that they do see that, but absolutely, it's still, 75% of their high school career will, they will not have a competitive field, a home football game. And then for 50% of everyone there, they wouldn't have access to the main gymnasium. Yeah, and again, we agree. In my opinion, the logistics that goes behind, how do we manage during an occupied school replacement, just like we do an occupied renovation, first and foremost is top priority for us. And everything that you've mentioned or things that we've talked about, because it is the lifeblood for them, the operation of their school. We do know that using existing facilities, adjacent schools, we've got to maximize the facilities that we have. And we know that there may be games on Saturdays, you may have convocations on Saturdays, so that it's at Glenn Allen High School instead of Tucker High School, or it's at Verona High School, or Henrico. We're going to have to work through that, but we've just got to make sure, working with our schools, even when they schedule events for outside groups, we pretty much have to put a moratorium on that. You need to lay off any of these adjacent schools, because we need to use those facilities, and we've got to have them available for the primary mission of the school for our kids.
Right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, just going to go through the floor plans, just real quick. So I'll quickly go through the floor plans, because there's some really nice stuff beyond that in terms of how we're addressing, you know, facilities for life-ready graduates and collaborative learning. But we're starting with a familiar starting point. So quickly, we wanted to get beyond a familiar starting point and evolve these quickly into Tucker and Highland Springs, and not the name of the previous prototype. And also to see how we could evolve this prototype into something that really responds to the instructional work that you all and your staff and the teachers and the central office leaders are really trying to do from an instructional level. So this really focused on really four main areas. After we went through a programming process, analyzed and looked at the existing master schedules for course content, started getting input from the entire instructional leadership team, and really started to focus on four kind of main areas. One was the relationship of admin and guidance, and we're all familiar with Glenn Allen and how there's some underutilized space in the administrative area. Can we utilize that space so we can start to kind of grab other space? So in terms of the sequence of admin and counseling, we have counseling being moved upstairs with a vertical circulation connection, stairs and elevator to get from administration up to counseling. The introduction of collaborative areas, you can see in kind of the light purple area and the inboard areas within each of the four academic wings, we're looking at utilizing those spaces into really robust collaborative learning areas. Flexible instruction areas, again, with ridable surfaces, flexible furniture that can be reconfigured, technology, those sorts of things. The third main area is the library, and just completely turning the library upside down in connection with, if you're familiar with Glenn Allen, upstairs between the two open stairwells at the end of Main Street, there's some space there above, the existing culinary area, that was really ripe for capturing a square footage. Again, for the introduction of some collaborative areas, and then establishing a really robust vertical, visual connection to the library, a much more open concept, again, the introduction of a learning stair within the library, and we've got some three-dimensional images of those areas as well. Really very similar, really, as Mr. Shiroki went through, the common areas between both schools. The real differences between the two schools are real related to the implementation of CTE programs, a little different in each school, as well as the programs that are specific to each school, but the basic components of each school are primarily the same, other than Tucker being mirrored to work site-wise. So in terms of collaborative learning, you can see some initial concepts here of the library. Again, open concept, being able to, they're on the right-hand side, the entry coming from the main entry of the building. First thing you see is a nice casual seating area for students to work together, to socialize together. Some three small group workrooms there along kind of the upper right-hand side of the library. The learning stair facing, being a big prominent area as well. And then sort of a social gathering coffee bar area there on the lower right, lower left-hand side of that space, and then utilizing kind of the back half of the library space for more instructional space, breakout space, and for stacks. Upstairs, you can see that this is the infill space, you can see, excuse me, that serpentine orange kind of seating area, and the classroom on either side, that's all new square footage that we're proposing being added between those two open stairs, and then some bridge elements that connect back to the main circulation path upstairs and ultimately down into the library. So again, a very robust collaborative area, lots of flexibility in terms of the way students can interact in this area, the way teachers can deliver instruction in this area, and then very open visual connection between all of these spaces. Really, this becomes the heart of the school, and this is the most significant change between the new Tucker and new Highland Springs High School compared to the prototype starting point, is that this is all open. This really becomes the student center, student commons of the entire school, a very collegial feel. This is what that space currently looks like, and then the next sequence shows some initial ideas of what it might look like in three dimensions. Again, the openness, the ease of circulation, this right now is a relatively uncirculated pass within the existing prototype, and then again, utilizing these spaces, providing some collaborative learning areas and some real classroom space is really going to activate this to turn this into a very robust collaborative learning area.
So for next steps, again, very similar to the elementary school, we will move into the design development and working with each of the school's staffs. Submit our plan of development in April, and you may have heard earlier when we awarded this, the manager did request that this project be what they call fast-tracked through the plan of development process, which means that the time that all staff developers in the planning department review the materials, it's been reduced by 50%. So something that normally would take two weeks for them to respond to, they have to respond within five business days. So that will help us be able to keep this project on track, so that ultimately, we can put this project out for bid in July, and then come back to you, we're planning in August. Possibly the first work session would be our goal in August. Construction would start in September, and we would complete construction in August of 2021. We're going to need at least 30 days to be able to move many of the existing equipment that can be repurposed. You know, obviously, our goal is to repurpose as much as possible, but one of the things that we will say, even for the elementary school, is that furniture will be a big part of this, and we want that to be to where our goal is, is unless furniture is really in great shape at Tucker and Highland Springs, it's either going to be surplus or repurposed elsewhere, but we want to put new furniture, and again, to promote the collaborative learning environment that's been designed. And then obviously, school would open September 2021. So with that being said, we go back to one of the first slides, and I just want to reiterate that we are currently, and I'm very proud of our team and the cooperation of the general government staff, we are moving forward with the replacement of Tucker and Highland Springs, meeting the superintendent's instructional goals. We currently have a budget of $80 million per school, it's $160 million, that's total project. The construction amount is less than the total project, because you still have to buy equipment, technology, and all the other stuff, plus you have to have a contingency within your project to be able to manage that. We're still moving forward and replacing the schools on-site and working through the wetland permitting process at Highland Springs, as well as reviewing the civil site layouts for both schools. We are considering, and we do believe that we are going to be able to successfully add additional capacities at both schools. I don't want to get too specific, but I can give you a ballpark today. For Tucker High School, which obviously, its enrollment today is less than Highland Springs, so the numbers I'm going to give are going to be, there's going to be a big difference between the two. But for Tucker High School, which currently today has about, I'll say, plus or minus 1,700 students, that number fluctuates, we're looking at potentially 300 additional seats, which is 12 to 14 classrooms, and that will all be panned out as we get through the design development. But we know that through the redistricting process, Tucker will be a school that you'll be able to look at to be able to do some adjustments in the future. As well as Highland Springs, which population today is a lot larger than Tucker, they've got about 1,820 students from their January ADM prediction, we're looking at potentially 75 additional seats, three to five additional classrooms. And I have to say, all of these classrooms are on top of the fact that we had to add space for ROTC at both school sites, we had to add a welcome center. We added, you saw those purple spaces that are collaborative spaces in both prototypes, as well as that piece above the library where we're raising the roof and adding collaborative space and classroom space there. So we are very excited about how we've been able to keep the existing footprint of the school the same. school the same, but we've been able to work within and probably add close to 3,500 to 4,000 square feet within the existing building, and mainly because we've been raising the roof and adding that square footage. So we're very excited about that. We've also, obviously, on track to open the schools in September of 2021. We will keep you apprised, as we've done through this process, as things come up, if things substantially change, we're going to bring that back to you for review and consideration, but at this point, we feel as if we're really on track. But the permitting process at Highland Springs might change the location of things, depending upon how they wish for us to proceed with the mitigation that we have to do. So we put that little disclaimer out there, but we feel very confident. And we've had two pre-P O D meetings with the county, and they've been able to provide some feedback to us, so we kind of know where we're headed from the staff review, from police, fire, public works, utilities, all the folks that work with all developments here in the county. So with that being said, again, Mrs. Moore is up here, Mr. Halsey, myself, Mr. Raymond is here, anything that you might be able to ask, we're happy to answer at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
First, I think we need to give Mrs. Moore an award for standing through the entire presentation. But this is just an old man being picky. As you look forward and looking ahead, please make sure that there's adequate storage for teachers, for plant maintenance supervisors, for coaches, all those things. I, you know, I think that's really important. And then, when it comes to lighting, interior lighting, exterior lighting, please make sure that it's practical lighting and it's lighting that is going to last and not drive a plant maintenance supervisor crazy, because he can't get the parts toward three, four years down the road. But thanks for all you're doing, it's exciting, and I think it's well on track, so thank you.
Agreed. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Robert.
I just have a request. Mrs. Moore will know all very well, when we were planning Tuckahoe Middle School, I was included in some of the planning meetings that we had, and that was very helpful for me and for the staff, because sometimes we would have conversations later that would result in something that was meaningful, but it also helped me with, you know, questions from parents and constituents. So as we go forward, if Mrs. Cock and I could be included in those meetings that happen, the design review and things like that at Tucker, I think that would be helpful, because I mean, it really was at Tuckahoe Middle, and so, and so some of these things have already happened, that would be, but as we, I looked at the schedule and a lot of meetings in March for design and so on, so I would appreciate being included in those so that we can go, if we can.
Absolutely. We embrace any input, and I do know that for many projects that all of you have been, I will say, project advocates for.
Absolutely.
The staffs do appreciate it when you're able to be there, even if it's only for 15 minutes.
Right.
But we would share with all of you as board members, when we're hosting the design development meetings, and we.
That would be great.
We'd love to have you there.
And I'd like, Mr. Raymond, is there anything that we haven't covered that you think, not to put you on the spot, but that you need us to know, or concerns you have going forward, or anything, I don't, just.
Yes, Mr. Raymond, is there anything else to add?
Is there, this is your two seconds, I mean.
Yeah, come on out. I'm interested.
Now that you've asked, I do want to say thank you to all of the board members who have brought up some very salient points regarding athletic budgeting and funding of that nature, and also the events that we do have at the school. As you probably noticed, we will be able to retain the auditorium for some time during the process, so that's, that's been good. But those are very real things that we've had to think about, about where we're going to play sports, practices being the key, as I think Al mentioned, Mr. Shiroki mentioned about that, so those things we're thinking through, we're still thinking through a lot of the events that we do that really make us Tucker, as most schools do. So that is a constant thing, is maintaining that school spirit and school culture through this process. While you guys did point out that it's seemingly, it's just two years in the life of the planet Earth, it's, it's two years of a, of a student's high school experience, and so we will be talking some more, I'm sure, as the process goes on, but I did want to say, in our work with Mosley and with CNN, we've felt supported and heard, and we're starting in on the process next Monday and Tuesday, where they're coming out to the school to speak to teachers and gather feedback, and some changes have been made based on things that we've pointed out, but we, we know that this is a very quick timeline, and that's, that's definitely something to keep our mind on, so slowing it down when we can to make sure we're doing the right thing is as much appreciated as I appreciate you saying what you did about wanting to be a part of it, so.
Yeah, if you could let us know when Monday and Tuesday, that would be great.
Okay.
And we'll see if we can work out being there. That'd be great.
Anything else for the good of the cause? Good, well, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much. This is such quick work, we appreciate it.
And the final item is a review of contracts to purchase wetland and stream mitigation credits for the Highland Springs High School replacement project. Mr. Shiroki.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. This is a continuation of the conversation about the wetland mitigation that is specific to Highland Springs High School's replacement. In the years past with other projects, you've had to authorize the purchase of wetland mitigation credits, and I just want to kind of give you an overview of what you have here today. We have a total of roughly 4.1 acres that have been designated as wetlands, that we're filing permits with the Department of Environmental Quality here in Virginia, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers for the wetland permitting process. And when you impact wetlands, when you're able to demonstrate that there's nothing else you can do but to have to build on the wetlands, you have to purchase wetland mitigation credits to offset the wetlands that you're impacting. And in, in this case, for wetland mitigation credits, you have to, it's a two-for-one. So in essence, we have 4.1 acres, we're going to need to buy a total of about 8.21 acres total of wetland mitigation credits. What you have today is just one start in the purchase, where we're purchasing 2.88 acres worth, we still have 5.33 acres out of that 8.21 to complete. What we have to do is we put this out for bid, there are folks that manage wetlands that then put, make offers, and this is a case where we were only able to grab 2.88, and we just have to go out and keep looking for folks that are willing to sell it to us, because that's what the Army Corps of Engineers and D E Q will require for us to develop on the site. In addition, there is some stream mitigation credits that are being impacted, and in this case, we have 114 linear feet of stream mitigation credits. Stream mitigation credits are one-for-one versus two-for-one with wetland mitigation credits. So what you see here is that for 114 linear feet, we're paying about $345 a linear foot, so you multiply that out, and that's the $39,000 that you have here. This will satisfy the amount of stream mitigation credits that we have to purchase, but we will be coming back to you, asking for your permission to purchase the additional wetland mitigation credits between now and probably the next six to nine months, I would imagine. So again, I want to explain that to you, but this is all publicly bid out, and it's, and it's working through our procurement office. In this case, we had one bidder that responded and purchasing allowed us to move forward with that. Sometimes we have two or three. It just depends upon the wetland mitigation credits that are available within the watershed of the area that you're building in. And I can answer any further questions that you may have with us.
Are there any questions regarding the wetlands and stream bed mitigation? There being none. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shiroki. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes items for the superintendent.
Yes, it does. So do we have any unfinished business for the board? Any new business for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have.
Yes, please.
One, one thing I'd kind of like to put on our radar, it has come to my attention, I've been contacted by a couple of people, that we will be having a political primary in June, and so I've already had parents contacting me, asking whether we will follow the example of other school systems who are finding alternatives for primary day, so I would just like that, get that conversation started and see what our plan will be. And I know that's the day of graduations, so the high schools, obviously, there won't be a lot going on, but just think we need to examine the possibilities of looking at our calendar for primary day.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent, if you have any.
Will do, we'll report back on that.
Okay, good, thank you. Is there any other new business? I believe Reverend Cooper may have something for us.
I would just want to give a shout-out to Brooklyn Middle School, to Mr. Barlett, Dr. Barlett and his staff for inviting Ms. Cock, myself, and others to their Supreme Court Fair today. It was very inspirational and informative to see, in essence, the science fair model paradigm shifted to the Supreme Court Fair model. So they got to work on projects and display landmark cases that have affected our nation and that were decided at the Supreme Court, so just want to.
Very nice.
Say how wonderful a day we had her and I, and she even has a gavel, so I think she bought that to take it from you, but you know.
Our students did it in a 3D printer.
That's good.
Very nice, very nice. Well, that sounds like a great program, and thanks for, thanks for representing us and being there and for reporting. Any other new business, board members? There not being any, then, of course, we have our monthly meeting here tonight, and beginning at 6:30. And our next work session will be March the 14th, it's set to begin at 2:00 PM, subject to time being changed. There being no further business, we are concluded. Thank you.